Midland County Board of Commissioners, meeting to order Tuesday, December 2nd, or December 6th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. And call roll, please.
Fisher Snyder.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Noson.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here.
Ask Commissioner Twilliger to leave us in the invocation and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we have much to be thankful for. We are thankful for our community that works tirelessly to care for the needs of our residents. And we are so thankful for our county employees that diligently have persevered through many challenges. And fellow commissioners, who are prudent and wise stewards of our county resources. Finally, we pray for your blessing of health, peace, and grace this Christmas season as we celebrate the birth of your son. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is the approval of the minutes for November 1st and November 7th, 2022.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Court, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. We will approve the minutes and move on to the acceptance of the bills.
Properly addressed, General Bank claims for the weeks of 10/24 through 10/28, $558,127.04. With total general fund expenditures, $215,422.79. General Bank claims for the week of 10/31 through 11/4, $563,056.43. With total general fund expenditures, $46,211.94. General Bank claims for the weeks of 11/7 through 11/11, $1,602,526.20. With total general fund expenditures, $56,395.25. General Bank claims for the weeks of 11/14 through 11/18, $317,784.66. With total general fund expenditures, $111,363.96.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the bill.
Court, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will pay the bills and we are now going to move on to the special program of the day, which is an update from County Connection and its president, Lynn Knapp. Thanks for being here, Lynn.
Hey, Lynn.
Yes, it's been a while since we've given you an update, and I thought it was probably about time, since it's 26 years that the program has been in operation. I had thought, too, I'm going to give you a little bit about some of the structure, because some of you that are newer may not know how this works. So, let's start with that, if you can read that. The program started in 96. It was a three-year pilot program called Project Zero, and it was developed to provide services throughout the county. Once that grant subsided, we said, could we possibly have some millage? So, we approached the board, we approached the townships, and everybody said, yeah, go for it. So, we did. And so, since 2000, we have also received millage. Our Board of Directors currently has, we have five seats. We have four individuals on the board right now. We have an open seat. Kathy Allen, who is here, has been the chair of that board for, we were just talking about that, 10 or 12 years. All of the individuals on our board work with an agency, or have worked with an agency. So, their people are users of our service, and they're our clients as well. County Connection acts as a, we run the program, the county board acts as a pass through for funds, and that's whether it's millage, state, or federal. That's how that works. There's an admin fee that is maintained by the county for the millage, but other than that, County Connection manages all the grants, contracts. We develop them all, and we go to the board for approval. We're responsible for the grant funding audits, as well as the daily operation and purchasing. We prepare all the assistance reports for the state and federal money, and the personnel is also the responsibility of County Connection. Some facts I thought you might be interested in. Our total budget for '22, '23 is $3,182,000. Out of that, 34.99% is state, federal is 18%, millage is 38.88%, and fares, advertising, et cetera, where we generate revenue, is 8.14%. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Saturday, 6:30 to 6:00. However, we have a dispatcher, bless our heart, in at 3:00 a.m. And our drivers actually start at 4:30, otherwise they wouldn't be able to make the 5:00 o'clock pickup. So, they're driving, we have drivers on till midnight. We have a fleet of 22 buses and two vans, 30 drivers, 13 full-time, five dispatchers, as you can imagine with that long stretch, two mechanics in two bus maintenance positions, and one operations supervisor-manager. We put over $1,886,000 into the community in wages and benefits. To give you an idea of why we need all the dispatchers and all the buses, total miles driven in our last full year was just over 1 million. And that's a lot of miles on each bus. We have fuel prices anticipated this year, which probably is way off, you know, because we had to do this a while ago. We had $439,000 in fuel costs, but we know that's probably going to be a little higher. Looking at the rides that we generate, and this is through our software, we have a scheduling software program, so the numbers I'm giving you are right from that software. We have the percentage of rides in the city of Midland. When Dial-A-Ride is not in service, then we have an agreement where we can go in and, so to speak, pick up and deliver individuals, and within the city limits. And quite often, it's for dialysis, or such a reason. So, 7% of our rides are in the city on the off-hours of Dial-A-Ride, and 42% of our rides originate in the city of Midland. As the individuals, we pick them up, they're city residents, and then they travel to other destinations outside of the limits. Lee Township, 15%, Homer Township, 12%, Ingersoll, 10%, Jerome, 8%. The purpose in destinations, why are people riding? And this is really important, because it does so much for our community. Quality of life, we have people going to Arnold Center, Pinecrest, Stratford Pines, they have foster care, the 1016 House, House of Mercy, dialysis is a big one, Brittany Manor, Seasons 2, McBride's Foster Care, Metal Lodge, and the Heart and Vascular Center. Work-related, we have a lot of individuals that use this service for work. Aptar, Exalt Battery Plant, the Dow Gate, Walmart, McDonald's, Burger King, the mall, Coleman Apartments, Sanford Food Center, Whispering Pines, Hampton Inn, the H, Hutamaki Plastics, Home Depot, Bob Evans, and Culber's, as well as others. Those are just an example of some of the places we go. Recreation, Greater Midland Community Center and Planet Fitness, and that can be adults, it can be kids after school. One of the more areas that seems to be growing, frankly, are the schools, because schools of choice, you can send your child anywhere in the county, but sometimes it's difficult to get them there if you're a working parent. So, daily, we transport students to all of the Midland Public Schools, including, of course, Midland and Dow High, Meridian High and Junior High, the ESA, Windover High School, Academic and Career Education Academy, Midla Montessori, Coleman Elementary, Floyd Elementary, Bullet Creek High School and Junior High, and any other school that a parent might request. This allows parents to have the freedom to send their child to the school of their choice. I call this going beyond county lines. What we were able to do over the past 20-some years is develop partnerships and good relationships with some of the surrounding counties' transportation. Isabella County is I-Ride. We have a transfer point at Oil City-Sinoco. We find people using that service for work, for college, medical. Clare County Transit Transfer Point, Coleman Shell Station, again, medical, work, and Mid-Michigan Community College. Gladwin County Transit Transfer Point, Edenville, Dollar General, work and medical mostly, and there are other reasons, sometimes two. Bay Metro Transfer Point, the Midland Town Center, work, Delta, SVSU. And we have an inter-local agreement, so we can go a little bit into the Saginaw County area. But we have, I can think of a couple young people that actually completed college using this service and the transfer points, because they didn't have any way to get there. And so, this allowed them some flexibility they wouldn't have had, frankly. A unique transportation opportunity called the New Freedom Program. This is a grant that our operations manager, Gary, wrote, and it's to provide non-emergency medical appointments to hospitals, medical facilities, health clinics, and doctors within the state of Michigan outside of Midland County. This included the purchase of two vans for this service. And it is established especially for our Midland County residents, veterans, seniors 60 and over, disabled, ADA, and current member number of individuals served currently, which is, it's growing constantly. We have at least 10 rides. The drivers volunteer. We don't have a driver specifically assigned to this service. Even Gary volunteers, and some of the dispatchers, if there's a need. But our goal is to, how frustrating is it when you have to have a doctor's appointment down in Ann Arbor, and you have no way to get there? So, as a senior citizen, or again, a veteran, anybody over 60, ADA, we've been getting them there. Examples of trips taken, the VA in Saginaw, Henry Ford in Detroit, the U of M, Ann Arbor, Auburn Clinic, Covenant Health in Saginaw, Physical Therapy in Brighton, Grand Rapids Spectrum Health. So, we basically, if they need to get to an appointment, we get them there. And this has been, I think, a real positive for a lot of people that had no way, no one to help them go to an appointment. So, I wanted to give you this update, because things have changed over the last 26 years. We've added more, and we continue to try to grow. And I think that the service is a real benefit to the Midland County community, because we're bringing people into work. We're taking people out to areas to work. We're working with medical, we're working with the children, so they can go wherever they would like to go, to go to school. So, that is basically all of the facts, the fun facts. Are there any questions or anything we can answer?
Commissioner Noson.
Thanks, Lynn. That was helpful, very helpful. Couple of questions. The cost of doing all of this, I see the fair schedule. I'm pretty sure we do have a millage, right?
Correct.
To what extent is this fair schedule, does it cover all the costs? Obviously, it doesn't.
Oh, no. It's just a percentage.
Like what?
8%.
8%?
Yeah. That's why we have the state. No, we have state and federal grants on top of the millage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. A lot of people have talked about public transportation in Midland County. We have Dial-A-Ride, we have County Connection. Do we even have taxi service anymore?
I think so.
A little bit of it.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, is, from your perspective, do we have a problem with public transportation in this county?
We haven't really seen it, because the only problem we have sometimes, finding drivers, to be honest with you.
Okay, because it's voluntary?
No, the regular drivers.
Oh, even regular drivers?
Yeah. But no, we've been able to meet the needs of when individuals call us. We've been able to respond.
I would agree, and I just think that, you know, because of the size of this community, it's not a big city. We can't afford, you know, rail or buses on a permanent schedule. I think we have a pretty effective solution here to, and I just wonder what, when people start talking about, well, we need to do more for public transportation in the county, I just wonder how big a problem that truly is right now.
Yeah.
Thanks for your efforts. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Twilliger.
So, thank you so much, guys. I've learned a lot, and I'm thankful. I'm one of, I mean, I know it's all about this, this whole county, but I wonder for that, I totally agree with some of the other questions that Scott was asking. We have additional brochures, so that when people have questions, and then we don't have to bother you, we can look it up.
Sure. We have extra ones with this.
That would be great, so that we have them.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Thanks for the update. We appreciate it.
And I appreciate you, because this board has been so great to work with, and it means a lot. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work. Okay, now we're going to move on to public comment on anything today that is not on our agenda. Public comment on anything that is not on our agenda. Is there any public comment? You state your name and address.
Renita Bonnades from Homer Township. I had spoken last month, on November 1st, about FOIA requests that I put in, and the fact that I had not received multiple responses that I would have expected in that FOIA, given comments.
Point of information, we have a new business item.
It's not related to this.
It is not? Okay.
No, this is my FOIA request that I'm responding to.
Gotcha.
After that meeting, when I stated that there were multiple FOIA responses that I did not receive, I did receive a letter from Mr. Smith stating that following your public comments made to Midland Public Board of Commissioners, I received the collection of requests made to the county. In doing so, I found that several requests you mentioned had been omitted from the packet provided to you in our response. The inadvertently omitted requests were placed in a separate file related to election matters, and staff shortage resulted in different individuals handling those requests. Please find enclosed, attach those requests. Should you have any questions or need to discuss this, please feel free to contact me. I was given a few more responses to my FOIA request, and I responded saying that this is still missing documents. And further, the redactions that are made on the FOIA responses, this does not follow Michigan law for FOIA redacting. There are only certain things that are allowed to be redacted by FOIA law. You can't just go through and put black marker all over a piece of paper. There are only certain personal information items that can be removed. Still did not get responses, certainly never found those 18 documents that were referenced, that were all sent, that we called Homeland Security for, because we had people requesting information from this board and from the county. So, I'm very concerned that there is FOIA law. It's very specific about what's to be provided. It's not supposed to be a hunting, hand me a few documents, and tell me that this is maybe what you're looking for. FOIA law states, this is what I requested. I am to receive everything that falls within that FOIA request. I don't understand why we're picking and choosing how we're filling FOIA requests. And I think as commissioners, you have employed somebody to do that on your behalf in this county, and you need to make sure FOIA law is actually being followed, and it should be followed to the T. And it might be helpful if you also read the FOIA law and understood what's allowed to be requested, what can be redacted, and what can be denied, because my request was certainly not fulfilled completely by FOIA law. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Public comment, going once, going twice, gone. We will move on to standing committee report number one, please, Ann.
Date of December 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of the amendment to number one to the Engineering Services Agreement with Wade Trum related to the master plan expansion of the current mosquito-controlled facility. This amendment includes $8,950 for engineering site plan design, and adequate funding is available in the budget for this agreement. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 30-4-22.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion. Ann call roll, please.
Mr. Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number two, please.
Date of December 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of the agreement with Community Mental Health for Central Michigan for the provision of mental health services coordinator at the Juvenile Care Center. The coordinator is an employee of CMHCAM and is being provided at no cost to the county in an effort to promote access and continuity of care for youth with serious emotional disturbances. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 112-11-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion. Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number three, please.
Date of December 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of the attached revision to County Policy 303.1, purchasing policy, as submitted by the Administrator Controller. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 116-11-22.
Is there any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion. Ann call roll, please.
Fisher Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number four, please.
Date of December 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of the attached revision to County Policy 303.2, selecting consultants for professional services, as submitted by the Administrator Controller. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 117-11-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion. Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number five, please.
Date of December 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of the attached revision to County Policy 701.1, building and building equipment maintenance authorization, as submitted by the Administrator Controller. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 117-11-22.
That's 118.
118.
I'm sorry, 118-11-22.
Is there any public comment on this? Commissioner, discussion. Ann call roll, please.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number six, please.
Date of December 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the agreement for property assessment administrative administration services with the city of Coleman. Under this agreement, the county will allow the Equalization Director to form services as the appointed assessor of record to the city, and the city agrees to pay $3,150 for these services. We recommend approval of the agreement, and that the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee. Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, Jim Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 114-11-22.
And Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 114-11-22.
Do we have any public comment on this? Commissioner, discussion. Ann call roll, please.
Mr. Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number seven, please.
Date of December 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee and the Finance Committee and the Human Services Committee have reviewed the grant agreement with the Michigan Supreme Court State Court Administrative Office in the amount of up to $100,000. We've also reviewed the subsequent request to increase the FTE of the Mental Health Court Coordinator position from .08 FTE to 1.0 FTE. We recommend approval of the agreement, and that the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. We further recommend approval of the FTE increase, and that this change be contingent upon continued grant funding. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee. Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee. Eric Dorian, Chairperson, Gates Twilliger, Steve Glazer, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 113-11-22.
And Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 113-11-22.
And Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Human Services Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 113-11-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion. Ann call roll, please.
Mr. Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number eight, please.
Date of December 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the revised Michigan Department of Treasury Form titled "Statement Showing Taxable Evaluations and Mills Apportion by the County Board of Commissioners," also known as the Annual Apportionment Report. This form fulfills the statutory requirement and reports the allowable millage beloved for the current year. These millages are certified to the state. These millages are certified to the state via electronic submission by the Equalization Director. However, this report is kept on file to meet the statutory requirement of MCL 211.37. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 101-10-22.
Is there any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colerole, please.
Mr. Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
To Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion carries.
And committee number, committee report number nine, please.
Date of December 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the proposed adjustments to the 2022 budget as submitted by the Finance Director. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 115-11-22.
Do we have any public comment on this? Or Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colerole, please.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion carries.
That is it for our committee reports. We have no RPCs today. We have no old business. We do have one item of new business I would need a motion to bring up and support.
Support? I mean, I move. I'll support it.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. And would you read new business number one, please?
Date of December 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. I am requesting that this body consider the attached appeal of a FOIA response to Ms. Margaret Gillian and that the appeal for Ms. Margaret Gillian be denied. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, District Number 7, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, I move that, excuse me, this piece of new business be approved.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? And you were going to give a presentation on this, is it?
Yeah, John and I are going to talk about this briefly.
Maybe there'll be discussion after.
Okay, that's my question.
So I'm going to talk a little bit, John's going to come up and go over some of the documents that I handed out to you. These are excerpts from Ms. Gillian's FOIA request. So I talked to Bill, Bill and I had some communication about the different FOIAs that we have been receiving. And one of the things, when Ms. Gillian's request first came in, John and I immediately started looking at election security, election integrity. So if you remember back on September 20th, we gave you a complete 20-minute presentation regarding the fact that elections fall under critical infrastructure and that we were under the impression that these particular FOIA requests were actually asking for software excerpts from our EMS system in our office that we use for elections. So that was what we, that was what we based our information on when we gave it to Bill and to the board, and we still, we still believe that. We are very much responsible for the integrity of the process. Some of you yesterday were able to join John and I out at the Public Safety Building where we did a hand recount for Commissioner Dorian's election. And one of the things that you need to remember here in Midland County is that this request that these folks are asking for, the CBR report, we actually don't have it. So after doing further research, after we had responded to Bill, we actually don't import data the way that would allow the CBR report to be created. So actually, our response will be that we don't have this document because we don't create this document. We do things differently than Colorado, even Clare County, and John will talk a little bit about that when he comes up. But, so we need to understand, we don't actually have this, we don't have this format, we don't, we don't do things the way other people do. We are, we follow state law and we work very closely with our IT department on how our results get to the county of Midland on Election Day. But, so for those of you who were at the recount yesterday, you will, you will understand that, you know, the CBR, people are trying to use as auditing purposes, but here in Midland County, we use the gold standard. And again, John's going to talk about this a little bit, but the gold standard for auditing is actually the paper ballot, right? Because you can actually see how someone voted. You can actually have a piece of paper that shows the check mark, that shows the circle that's filled in. And so we believe that, you know, we have the gold standard and that's, that's what we're going to continue to use. So the CBR report is not something that we produce, it's not something that we're ever going to produce, and so therefore, that would be the reason why this board should deny the request because it's not, it's not something that we have. So I'm going to let John talk about the paperwork that's in front of you. This isn't going to take too long, he's just going to go over some points. And then if you have questions, feel free to, feel free to ask them.
All right, so as Ann stated, no CBR, CVRs exist on our EMS system. We can't give what we don't have. We're not legally obligated to create a document.
You speak up, Seth.
We're not legally obligated to create a document in order to satisfy a FOIA request. A CBR is utilized by some jurisdictions as a mean of, means of auditing an election. We use what is considered the gold standard in auditing, which is the voted ballots and the tapes produced at the conclusion of the election. Therefore, Midland County has no need to produce CVRs. CVRs are actually the second-best option for auditing, but are used by individuals without access to the ballots and the tapes. We choose not to use them in Midland County because they are produced electronically by the same machinery that's being audited, the ICP and the EMF. Therefore, Clerk Minery and I rely on the gold standard for auditing. So let's talk about a few things that were presented with the request here. I've included those items for you. Specifically, it was the report by the NIST, which is Special Publication 1500-103, Cast Vote Records Common Data Format specification. Okay, that page, that was 94 pages, so I didn't print that for you, but I have printed a couple pages that the person referenced there. First, one, this specification is from a credible source. The NIST is a credible source, so the information that they provided is credible. The specification addresses cast vote records and their intended use. But let's look into some of the things that were provided. You'll see that there's a photograph of one of the pages that has the word "the public" highlighted at the bottom. The photograph of page six of the specification is misleading. It appears that the intent is to show that the CRV is intended for the public, when in fact, page six in the specification simply states, "This specification is geared towards the following audience," and it lists election officials, voting equipment manufacturers, election analysts and auditors, election affiliated organizations, and finally, the public which has been highlighted on the information provided by the requister. When interpreted correctly, this implies that the, the report as a whole, the NIST specification, is intended for these audience. We can see further evidence of this on page 10. It's actually labeled page one, but it'll be the next one that you come to. As it refers to the specification, not as the CRV or CBR, I use those interchangeably, cast vote record and cast record of votes are two different ways that those are referred to, they're the same, same item. But it does not refer to the CBR, but the report as a whole. And further evidence, when we visit the NIST's website and explore their own glossary and definition of terms, which states, "A specification is a document that specifies in a complete, precise, verifiable manner the requirements, design, behavior, and other characteristics of a system or component, and often the procedures for determining whether these provisions have been satisfied." Therefore, when this document, the NIST specification, refers to this specification being available to the public, it is only referring to the document as being publicly available, which it is. It in no way implies any legal obligation to distribute any of the components talked about in the specification. And I've included the link so you can see the NIST's own definition of that term, specification. They also included a picture of a map of Michigan with Clare County highlighted. Clare County is a Michigan county, that's factual. Clare County utilizes the same voting equipment as Midland County, that also is factual. Clare County mayor may not have released CBR files to the requister. This I don't know, I don't have that information. But if we assume that Clare County delivered the CVRs to the requister, that has no bearing on what Midland County's actions are. We are not Clare County and we differ greatly in our administration of elections. Clare County may produce CVRs as a normal way to their, audit their elections, we do not. As stated above, we utilize the ballots and the tapes produced by the tabulator at the conclusion of election night. And finally, Midland County does not make decisions based on what other counties' actions are. Many counties vary greatly in their government. As an example, some counties allow marijuana dispensaries, we do not. Some counties allow wind farms, we do not. Some counties may produce CVRs, Midland County does not. Therefore, the basis of another county producing and providing CVRs to requisters has no bearing on this county's actions. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Doesn't look like it, John.
Is this Commissioner, discussion now? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, questions, question for him and I guess discussion, but, but John, you say we don't use the CBR file for the validation process, if you will, of elections. But, but that file is resident on that machine, is it not? I mean, that's, that's just part, that's a... It has to be exported, it has to be produced and created, and in fact, in the, a lot of the requister's original files, they give you instructions on how to produce that, but it is not something that the EMS would produce without being told to do so. Okay.
Just to clarify, you could do it, but it's not done on a routine basis, is that correct?
Could be correct. You would have to bring in the results in a specific way to allow the CBR to be produced, but could it be done? Absolutely.
So, so my question is about auditing, and I, I, you know, when we look at a FOIA request, it's not necessarily about what their intent is and how they want to use that information.
Fair.
It's pretty clear what the intent of CVRs and others are, and it's stated here that it's to increase public confidence in our systems. So if we don't do that, could you talk to us about the audit process itself?
The audits are public, the public is welcome to attend, but as we saw yesterday, a recount is also a form of an audit, and the public is invited to that.
So...
Yesterday, just to be clear, yesterday is, is a very specific issue.
Right.
We didn't have access to all the data, all the ballots, et cetera. So help me understand the audit.
Okay, so what happens after every election, the state of Michigan goes in and randomly selects certain jurisdictions to be audited. Sometimes it could be a state audit where the state actually comes and conducts the audit. Other times, it's where we go out and we conduct the audits for our, for our local jurisdictions. And at that point in time, they tell us what office they want to audit, and we handle it just like we did the recount yesterday for Eric. So when John talks about the gold standard, we use the paper ballots to do audits. And again, those are public, they're open to the public, public can come, public, some public was there yesterday, they actually got to see the process. So, I mean, we are auditing on the gold standard, we are auditing the way the state of Michigan is requesting that we audit. We just don't use the CBR report to do any auditing, and we're not required to, so...
So when was the last time we did a full audit of the election results?
We do it after every single election, based on the state of Michigan giving us the jurisdictions to audit. We're not going to go out into every single jurisdiction after an election and do an audit. We're going to go into the specific jurisdictions, the state, and it's randomly selected, they have a program that they select. We don't have enough time, Scott. I mean, to do an audit of a township can take anywhere from three to four hours per precinct. So we're not, we don't have time to go out and audit the entire county of Midland after an election. That's not, that's not what the state requires. They require that they take a sampling, sometimes it could be two precincts in Midland County, sometimes it could be five precincts in Midland County. We don't ever know. And it's really generated from the state of Michigan, and they come and they give us the specifications on what office we're going to audit, because we don't obviously audit the entire ballot, but they'll pick the governor's race, or they may pick a state proposal. And we literally have to go to that precinct and we literally have to do a recount, and we have to audit that precinct based on that specification.
So when was the last time the state asked us?
After the August primary, and we'll get another request after the November general. It's every single election that we do outside, I mean, any, any, any election that has anything to do with the state. We don't, like, if we had a school election that was not part of, you know, the state, like, the state, then we wouldn't be audited on that, but every single election that we run, we're audited.
Okay, I, I'm sorry to belabor this because I don't quite understand.
Okay.
I, I think you said that the state randomly audits counties.
They randomly select jurisdictions within each and every county. No, no, each and every county in the entire state of Michigan is, is in a pool, and out of that generation, they select for each county certain precincts after every single election to be audited.
So every county is audited.
So the entire state of Michigan is audited.
On certain elements.
Yes.
That's what I needed to know.
Yes. Every single county is audited.
If I could add to that, so they, they choose a few from each county that we audit, and then they choose some that they audit. And in fact, I believe our last state audit was Jerome Township in 2020, and then after the state audited us, we were actually audited by the Office of the Attorney General, the OAG's office as well. And one thing that I'd like to highlight is neither of those entities use a CBR for the audit process. They all utilize the gold standard, which is the ballots and the tapes. In fact, I'm not, I, I don't have any knowledge about this, but I'm not certain that any, that you're actually allowed to audit using the CVRs. I don't think there's any value to the CBR here in the state of Michigan because we, as clerks, are allowed access to utilize the ballots and the tapes. Now, I haven't spoke to every county to find out if they've gotten permission to do that, but when we read the rules and the instructions for auditing, they all talk about utilizing the ballots and the tape. Nowhere have I read that a CBR is, is permissible to use for those audits, and nowhere has it been, has, have I witnessed that being utilized as an auditing tool. So, and a lot of these original requests came in with Colorado data attached to them. In fact, even the export references Colorado's Chapter 14. I don't even have a Chapter 14 in my EMS manual. So we don't do things the way other states do it. Could we? Possibly, but that is not the standard that Michigan elections are geared towards. Now, like I said, some counties may have went ahead and followed those directions. I spoke to a few individuals and they followed those directions and produced those CVRs, but it's my understanding that if a report does not exist, we're not required to produce it.
Any other discussion? Yes, Commissioner Snyder.
So we've never produced a CBR in Midland County.
We have never produced a CBR in Midland County for any of our elections.
Have we collected the data in such a way? Have, have, is it said?
We have collected the data in a way, but not for every election. The way that we amalgamate data has changed in the past couple of years.
So would you be able to even produce what they're asking based on what we have?
I would not be able to produce a 2020 November election CBR.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Knowson?
Well, you could tell from my questions, I'm, I'm just a little concerned here. This is one of these thorny issues. I go back to my experience at Dow and I made a comment at Dow that we should be confidently losing control of information. And I'm, and of course, the lawyers jumped all over me and said, whoa, whoa, we can't do that. We can't do that. I do still believe that. And I believe that we should go above and beyond the call of duty to increase the transparency and the ability for everybody to feel confident in the election.
I, I don't disagree with you.
I'm, I'm not debating, so I'm just stating my opinion here.
I, I don't disagree with you. And we make every effort available to members of the public to come to us, to come and participate in every aspect of the election process. I mean, I went so far as to said I would set a day where I would literally walk through the entire process of an election from the very beginning of programming all the way to the end when we tabulate the ballots. And I got zero people interested in coming to do that. So I, I think that you, you have a valid point, and it's a thing that the clerks have been struggling with since 2020, is how do we get the public engaged? We invite them to come to recounts. We invite them to come to public accuracy tests. We invite them to do these things. We invite them to ask questions. We want people to be informed. We want transparency. But I can't give you transparency when I'm, if, if you want me to turn over the integrity of the process. Not, I can't do that. I have a job to do. So I can't, I, I'm not going to-
I'm not sure I understand that, turn over the integrity.
Well, because if, if I let someone into, into the system to, to get pieces of the software, then they have the ability to perhaps hack into our process. And so those are the things that we have to be cognizant of when we give this information out. I mean, Bill and I have had numerous conversations about how this process works. And, I mean, it's a learning experience for us. I mean, these FOIAs have been enlightening, to say the least. But at the end of the day, I have a responsibility to every citizen in this county to make sure that our process is safe and secure. And I can't, I'm not going to turn over data and software that allows people to jeopardize the integrity of that process.
Nobody's asking for software.
There was actually a request for an image of the EMS, which amounts to-
Some of this stuff is hard to-
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not supportive of that. But the, the idea of we could create a CBR, but now I hear you can't-
We cannot create it from 2020 from the way that we brought results in.
Okay. And so I, I think then, that's why I asked the questions about audits, et cetera, that, that the public has to feel comfortable in the state and our audit processes and can be involved in those if they want.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have one more.
Commissioner Snyder?
So it says that the request is denied for the reason that Ann's stating. But my understanding is the request is denied because we don't physically have the data. So that is-
In the beginning, we denied based on the security issues. And I had not produced a CBR, so I did not know if they existed or not. We, my advice was to deny based on the security issues. Basically, if you give them an export, it's not a report that they're asking for. It's an export. You give them the data file. It's the exact same structure that if you wanted to import results into my EMS, would have to look like that. But after, after speaking with the board and some people's concerns, I looked to see if we could even produce the CVRs, and we cannot.
So if I deny it today, it would be based on us not having the available information?
For whatever reason you deny it, at the end of the day, I cannot, I cannot produce something that I don't have.
I believe that the clerk's position is that in the first instance, it is a, not producing it affects the confidentiality of the information system. And in the second instance, they do not have the CBR, which was, they didn't think about this. This was the very first, I believe, the very first request for this information. The initial response was based on confidentiality. Subsequent requests and discussion indicates that they don't have a CBR. So it would be a denial, I think, for both reasons.
Commissioner Knowson?
So, I, I, again, I was not here for the first appeal. I apologize for that. But further on Jeanette's point, so you, in the first one, you didn't know if you could even create it or not?
I'll be honest with you, when I look at an export, a data export, I had never produced one. But on, at face value, it's asking for an export, not a report, which is software-based. And I mean, it came in, there were quite a few different requests. They wanted a copy of the EPO book, data being transferred to the state, a couple other different pieces of software and stuff. So when I looked at it as a whole, each one of those things, I did not produce. But had I even produced a CBR, I still would be reluctant to advise anybody to give that up. I still don't feel it's a good idea, even if we did produce CVRs, to give that up. Perhaps if you'd like to come and look at the process, maybe you would understand that. The EMS is a very protected system. And I mean, for instance, you guys all take the same know-before training that we take here at the county. One of the last trainings said even to tell somebody a list of software that's installed on your computer is a breach of security. To just tell them what software is on the computer, they're asking for far more than that, in my opinion.
Mr. Glazer?
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm not a computer geek. But when I go to my Windows operating system and I click on Files, I can see, these are the files that Steve has, my user files that are, that I've created. If I was to look into the voting machine, would I see a CBR file in a folder that I could click and drag and put on a memory stick as I can put on a Word document?
When you say voting machine, you're talking about the EMS, the computer that I used to amalgamate results for the county.
Okay.
I need to know that you're talking about Midland County.
The certified voting record would be resident in each individual voting machine. Is that not correct? That's where it would be produced?
So I believe the data that, that becomes a CBR is included on the cards. I don't know if it exists as a CBR on those cards, but those cards are wiped out 30 days post-candace. So we bring the results into the EMS. So I'm not sure that I can accurately answer your question without a little research. I would have to look into that, what's contained on the card.
Yeah, and I'm asking, because I honestly don't know-
Absolutely. And I'm telling you that I've looked as far as the EMS.
But that would be the model that I would almost expect to see, that, that the, the machine would have some record of-
It could be possible. But the requester, that's not what's on the table here. The Requestor asks for an export out of the EMS. So the different things that could be, I just want to make clear, are, are not part of this discussion. It could have been at a future discussion, absolutely. But what was asked for was an export out of the EMS with very specific instructions on how to obtain that. And that does not exist.
Thank you. Are we good now? Thanks, John. Ann, call roll, please.
Could you just clarify what we're voting on again?
Repeat.
So the, I'm going to reread the letter.
Thank you.
Date is December 1st, 2022. Properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I am requesting that this body consider the attached appeal of a FOIA response by Ms. Margaret Gillian and that the appeal for Ms. Margaret Gillian be denied. Respectfully submitted, Scott Knowson, District Number 7, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Can-
So we're responding, huh?
So I'm just, I'm just reading the request as printed what I have in front of me. Because I think these would go to the clerk and they would go to bills. So I'm just reading what I have. And it, it is requesting, I would request that the CVRs as .jason files be emailed to me as requested for the 2020 election. And, and so I went over it with a fine-tooth comb. I don't see anything saying export except for when, so I go-
The jason file is an export.
That is an export.
Okay. And so when I go through the list, I see something called cvrexport.jason. So I just wanted to understand.
Those are export files.
Okay. Thank you.
Ann, call roll.
Well, hang on, hang on. I have one question. So when we're voting on this matter of a yes vote is to continue to deny the appeal or a yes vote is to allow the appeal to go forward?
Counselor, you have something?
Yes.
The discussion today includes an additional reason for a denial, which is the nonexistence of the requested CBR cast vote record. So I would respectfully suggest that that denial include the additional reason for the denial.
It's the only reason.
No, there was a, there were, the initial reaction was for protection of the integrity of the system.
We've already dealt with that issue.
Well, that's the appeal. But your discussion today includes something addition.
I'm sorry, I'm still not clear as to whether a yes vote or a no vote is going to do for this.
Whether it's going to deny the appeal.
It's continuing to deny the appeal.
Correct.
Thank you.
We denied a previous appeal, correct?
That is correct. Lauren Norcott, September 20th.
Okay. Different deal. This has nothing to do with security. This is only, we are denying on the basis that we cannot create that file.
This is a different appeal.
That's my point. It has nothing to do with security. There's only, what is, help me state from your guys, from a professional standpoint, the appeal is denied because?
The continued questioning of the integrity of the system and the lack of the CBR.
I think both. I mean, we're denying based on both. Because we get, when we gave her the original denial, it was based on election security. Okay? Then after we continued to receive requests for it, we did some more research and determined we don't have them anyway. So when I reached out and Bill and I talked about this appeal, I said, it's for both. We don't have the documents and we still can't, we still wouldn't give them even if we did because of election security. So that's why. I mean, we, we, there's two reasons why we're, we're denying the request. And I don't know that we, I don't know if you want to rewrite this to include all of that language that says that this is a denial because of election security and it's also a denial because the records do not exist. I don't know if you want to rewrite your letter.
Do we have that option?
I mean, you can amend your letter.
You can amend it if you want.
I, I move that we make an amendment to that letter. Do you have the language, Ann? You can-
If it's okay, I'm just going to make a note to amend your letter to reflect the denial is for both election security and the fact that we do not have the records. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that, yeah. We, we still have to vote on the amendment, though.
Right.
I don't think we do, do we? We don't have to vote on the amendment. You're the, you wrote it, you can amend it. You can amend it. We'll vote on that.
Yes. You can amend it. You can make a friendly amendment as long as no one objects.
In fairness, I did not write it.
Well, he signed it.
I signed it. All right, so.
So we're going to call roll in a second when she's got this done?
Yes.
Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Glazer?
Yes.
Twilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Knowson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Six yes, one no. Motion carries.
That is it for new business today. We're going to move on to Commissioner Comments and start with Commissioner Glazer.
This is, our last item is, you know, kind of a, obviously a sensitive one. I too am concerned about elections and election integrity. So I'm certainly basing my vote upon the counsel of our attorney and our experts in the office. So I'm relying on that, not being familiar with the machines and, and what's available. So I, thank you for the discussion and the openness. And I guess I have no comments beyond that.
Commissioner Twillier?
Yes, I wanted to thank you for your comprehensive presentation. I find it, I'm a lifelong resident and I did, I believe, some additional information that I was not aware of. And I really appreciate you taking the time to present to us. And I do appreciate that, I hope that we have been able to address some of the concerns. And I appreciate the handed discussion on election integrity that transpired today. Thank you.
Commissioner Geisler?
No comment.
Mr. Dorian?
Well, just to say how much I appreciate being returned to this seat for another two years and thanking everybody who came out and participated in that process yesterday. It was quite a learning experience. Enjoyed it quite a bit very much.
Mr. Knowson?
I feel like a need to explain my no vote. I, I literally could go either way on this one. This is, this is a difficult one for me. And it's just something I feel in my heart of hearts that when we, in this day and age with elections, we need to go above and beyond the call of duty to provide whatever confidence we need to the public. Whether that's doable, whether that's more expensive, that can be debated. But that, that's my no vote and why I went there. I could just as easily vote yes. I understand security. I absolutely understand the fact that we can't, we have not created something called a CBR. And I certainly, I appreciate the fact that we talked about the audits and, and the checks and balances we have there. So without further ado, I think that explains my position. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Snyder?
So I want to thank Lynn too and the education, further education on county connection and how great it is for the community and surrounding communities. And I would just like to thank Ann and John. I think that, I, I believe we're a good, solid team here. I know we've talked about our checks and balances as commissioners. I know sometimes it's referred to as micromanaging. And I, I don't believe that. I think it's a check and balance. So to expound on what Scott said, we are in a new world where there is a need for extra transparency. And so I'm just going to continue to educate myself and maybe, maybe it's something we can think about to maybe have this extra, maybe do things a little different next time. But I think all of us are going to be looking into it and educating ourselves more, not because we don't trust our, you know, our elected officials. Ann was elected and then Ann chooses her staff. And I have confidence in that. But I am going to just continue to educate myself. I think these things are always good to talk about. I'm glad they're brought up. I'm glad we talk about them. And I'm, I think we do a good job of investigating. Thank you, Bill, for your service and the education that you provide to us on the law. So, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I wasn't going to make a comment, but I will say this, and good point, Jeanette, Commissioner Snyder, on what you said there for the transparency. But also along with the need for more transparency these days is there's a cyber war going out there. And the more stuff we let out, we have to be aware of that too. So people want transparency, but we also have to protect our county. And we're the gatekeepers to do that. So we can move to meeting schedule and go to Commissioner Glazer.
Yes, tomorrow evening, I have Porter Township at 7:00 Monday. I have Lee Township at 7:00. And that's it between now and the, or, well, let's see, we have to go till the 20th. Greendale is on Tuesday, the 13th, 7:00 in Greendale. And then Jasper on the 14th at 7:00. And that's all I have for your report.
Thank you. Commissioner Twillier?
Yes, I have Pinecrest Thursday. And also I plan to attend the MCTOA holiday event that's at Great Hall. On December 12, I have New York Township. On December 14, I have Midland Township. On December 15, I have Recovery Court. And on December 19, I have, tentatively have Senior Services. I haven't received the notification and I know it sounds, we don't always have a monthly meeting with Senior Services, but it's going to happen. It will be on that day. I just haven't received the notification. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Geisler?
A and O, Tuesday, December 13th, 2022, at 2:30 PM in the first floor conference room. That's it.
Commissioner Dorian?
I have EMS Advisory Board here tomorrow in this room at 3:45. And Human Services is scheduled to meet Monday, the 12th, at 2:00 in the first floor conference room. And I have Pinecrest Tour for Wednesday, the 14th. Okay. So that is indeed correct. Okay. I may or may not be going to that, but-
Commissioner Knowson?
Yeah, just a comment. I know we're only going to the 20th. I have no meetings after the 20th. And as, I'm not continuing on as a county commissioner, these are all the last of my meetings in this. So I do have this Friday, the MAC Environmental Committee, that meets at 10:00. I will not be able to attend the mediation that's scheduled. I will not be able to attend the med, the mediation that's scheduled at 1:00, unless I get back in time. It's possible I could get back in time. The 13th, we do have Executive Committee at 9:00 a.m., Finance Committee at 1:30. On the 14th, the Health and Human Services Committee meets at 9:30, and we will have to have an alternative representative for that committee. On the 15th, I have the, I'm sorry, Midland County Internet Connectivity Meeting, that's at 10:00 a.m. That is currently scheduled as a Zoom meeting. Depending on their wishes, I may intend as just a regular citizen to continue on with that meeting, but you may decide that you want to have a specific board member to attend. The 16th is the MAC Board, that's the big board, that's at 10:30 in Lansing, and that's it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Knowson. Commissioner Snyder.
So I'm going to participate in the MBA Holiday Party tomorrow night. I think it's just good to get out and meet and talk to people. I have the Road Commission, 9:00 a.m. on the 8th, and then the MCTOA party on the evening of the 8th. A lot of these others have been mentioned. I have the Village of Sanford on the evening of the 12th, Edenville Township, Sadeev, Coleman, and Geneva on the 13th. I will attend one of those. We're trying to finish up some year-end things, so I have Wicksum Lake Improvement Board on the 14th at 6:00, Jerome Township net 7:00, the 15th, again, trying to finish up some things on Sanford Lake Improvement Board on the 15th at 7:00, and Warren Township on the 19th, and that is it.
Thank you. I have tomorrow at 11:00, I have the Great Lakes Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau at the H at 11:00, and then being on the MBA Board, I will be attending their event tomorrow night at Dow Diamond at 5:00. I believe it's 5:00, and that's all I have to announce.
So at this point, I take motion...
Move to go into closed session, discuss labor negotiations.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Okay, we're going to go into closed session and discuss labor negotiations. Take a motion to go back into open session.
Move to go back into open session following closed session labor negotiations.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. We are now in open session, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, December 13, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. to meet in an executive session of the Board of Commissioners and for the committees to resume their duties. Thank you, everybody, have a good day.
You've had a great morning.